I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
I'm going to say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily glory and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas.
President.
Councilmember Brooke Markcott.
Here.
Councilmember Marla Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
First item is public comment. I ask you to put your phones on vibrate, silence them, and there's no back and forth, and don't see any comment cards. So we'll be moving on to Agenda Item 2.
Acceptance of the minutes of October 4th, 2022, which will publish on October 19th, 2022.
Do you have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swier and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Is there any discussion on our minutes of October the 4th? Hearing seen none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Item 3, we have no persons to address the council tonight. We'll be moving on to Item 4A.
Special Ordinance Number 2021-2022-12, Amendment Number 11, An Ordinance Amending the Budget to Adjust Within 5%.
Do you have a motion to open our public hearing?
So moved.
Check it.
So moved by the Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas, a second by Councilman Marla Lewis. Is there anyone to publicly comment on this? Hearing seen none? I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilman David Broussard. Thank you. Next public hearing, 4B.
Ordinance Number 2022-22, An Ordinance Declaring Certain New Iberia Police Department Vehicles as surplus and further authorizing the sale of same to the City of St. Martinville Police Department or any other police department at a cost not less than $20,000 per vehicle in accordance with state law.
Do you have a motion to open our public hearing?
Motion.
Whoa. Councilman Dustin Swier and Councilman David Broussard. Is there anyone here to comment on this item? Hearing seen none? I need a motion to close.
Motion. Second.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and I think Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Thank you all. Item 5A.
Special Ordinance Number 2021-2022-12, Amendment Number 11, An Ordinance Amending the Budget to Adjust Within 5%.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing seen none, please vote your machines. Thank you. 5B.
Ordinance Number 2022-22, An Ordinance Declaring Certain New Iberia Police Department Vehicles as surplus and further authorizing the sale of same to the City of New Iberia, the City of St. Martinville Police Department or any other police department at a cost not less than $20,000 per vehicle in accordance with state law.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Marla Lewis and a second by Councilman Dustin Swier. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing seen none, please vote your machines. Thank you. And now we have to wait how many days before they can sell?
10.
10 days, that's what I thought. I got to remind the chief. Last time they showed up with a check. All right, resolution 6A.
Resolution Number 22-218, Authorizing Submittal of Fiscal Year 2023 Louisiana Community Development Block Grant Application and Entering Into Agreements Associated with Administration and Engineering Services.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Is there any discussion on Item 6?
Yeah, so I actually have some questions.
Okay.
About this particular one. So when I was reading through it, it looks like we are using the CDBG grant, which is Community Development Block Grant money.
I know where you're heading.
So, okay, so.
This one is only for roads. This is something from the state that we took advantage of that can only be used for roads. It is that low interest money for this area, but it's only for roads.
Okay.
So our consultant, who is working on the sewer now, remember Richard Menville, didn't retire. Richard Menville just doesn't do these long-term projects.
Right.
And our consultant and Richard Menville, even though he doesn't handle it, sent us a memo and said, hey, I know y'all about roads right now. This is a way to get 1.6 million dollars.
Okay.
For roads.
Excellent. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I understand totally.
You know, what we were using for if this was the other money.
This was not, this is not the other money and it's a pot set aside just for roads.
Okay, that's perfect.
Good, good. Any other discussion?
Is it guaranteed or?
No, nothing's guaranteed unfortunately, and we are spending some money. What do you always tell me, Marlo, I'm a gambler? Spending, yeah, we're spending about $20,000 on the front end to get 1.6 million dollars. So we have to pay for enough engineering and we have to pay the consultant to handle this. Is there a good chance we're going to get it? Yeah, there is. And any information that is generated by the engineering firm doesn't change. Our roads aren't getting fixed on their own and they're not moving. So any of the engineering, we'll be able to use when we do future road programs. So we're really not losing or gambling that much.
Okay.
Okay, so this agreement that we're trying to sign with Fry McGee, it's called a, I guess it's called a pre-agreement?
Yes.
And so the cost they're saying is 5,000?
Yes.
When you look at the amend, I'm sorry, the part two contract?
He gets much more than that if it goes through.
Okay, so that's what my question is. One, how much are we paying him if it goes through?
Right, well, you can look, we're paying him a ton of money if he goes through, but they all work under those same fees.
Right.
Set up in the program and it's a percentage.
So do we know what that percentage is right now?
Yes, and I had figured it. I know because I wanted to know what it was. It's probably $100,000. I mean, it's not a cheap thing, but I asked him that and he put it in an email, which I didn't bring, so that I would know. I didn't want to have the number changed later.
It's consistent in all CBD.
Oh, yeah. It's consistent and that's what I asked Richard Menville. They all charge the same rate.
Okay, so right now.
The state fee curve for architects, well, you know, it's the same thing with this kind of work. So right now, we're on the hook for $5,000.
Right.
And he is the risk. He, we need him because we can't do it without him, but he's the risk. The engineering is not really a risk because again, we're going to keep that data and we need it.
Right.
So we'll be able to utilize it. So the risk for me is the $5,000.
Okay.
And there were only three people to pick from, from the state. And when Richard Menville, who, it's a huge loss that if he's not doing everything, the guy's wonderful. I mean, he just does a great job for us. But he doesn't want to do these things that take three and four years. So he gave me the three names and I interviewed those people. And probably three years ago, when I knew Mr. Richard was going to, maybe two years ago, when I knew he was going to step down from these long-term things, this was the best guy and actually, he's the only one. The other two didn't, weren't thrilled with coming here. They work in, you know, other areas of the state.
Okay.
So.
All right, so until we know whether or not we get the grant, we're only on the hook for $5,000.
Yes, yes. And I'm not positive of what the figure was. It was, it was a lot of money. We'll cross that bridge. In other words, if we get the grant, we'll, of course, I have to bring the rest of the agreement and then we'll know exactly what that figure is. But it was consistent with, you know, anybody else who would have done it.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions or comments? Then I ask you to please vote your machines. Let's hope we get it. I won't beat it to death now, but we have a road initiative on November the 8th. I'll talk about it before the meeting's up. With the bond money, we're spending a 12.5. It would be wonderful to add another 1.6, so wish us luck.
And it can only be used for roads. Could it be used for anything else like?
Only roads.
Okay, not sidewalks or anything?
No, this was one just for roads.
Okay, all right, let's check it.
No, that's great. That's what we need. This is a help. It informs everybody. 6B.
Resolution Number 22-219, Approving Change Order Number 1 between the City of New Iberia Coastal Centers Incorporated and Paula Allen for the Civic Center Marina Phase 1 project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott and a second by Councilman Dustin Swier. And if you remember, this money's already in our project. We knew about it before we approved the project, but now we've got to catch up on our paperwork.
This was the alternative.
This was the alternative. This was the 60,000 that we need for electrical. So we knew about it and it's already in the budget, but if we don't clean it up now, we start in a project that our paperwork isn't, isn't right.
Okay.
Paul?
That's exactly what we're doing.
Oh, good. I might have got something wrong.
It's a procedural thing. It's just to account for the money. You have an amendment to a contract, you have to officially change it by a change order.
Yep. Any questions or comments?
And we, we use this alternative because when we, we sent the bids out, they were higher. So we gave, asked them for alternatives, right, that we could pull out?
Well, we had a problem. No, we had a problem.
Okay.
We thought we would be able to hook up the electrical to some existing panels on this side of the building.
Okay.
We realized before, you know, like I said, we already, we got the price the right way. We realized that there was no way that was going to happen.
Okay.
So what's happening is we're spending the additional money to bore all around the world, basically, and get to the main entrance and the main panels of the building because it draws too much electrical.
Okay.
But we realized that and we had a price for it before we came to the council with the, with the job. But that's one that just, it didn't work the way we thought it was. The panel wasn't big enough. And when they figured the loads, it was just too much.
Okay.
And there was actually a lot of electrical spare energy here in this building, which is going to be able to power the entire marina. And instead of running a wire all the way from Main Street,
Yeah.
you're running a distance of 50 feet from the back of City Hall.
Yeah, it actually was, we researched like two or three alternatives and that was the cheapest of the alternatives that had enough, enough power available.
Excellent, okay.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. 6C.
Resolution Number 22-220, Approving Change Order Number 2 between the City of New Iberia Maureen Construction LLC and Paula Allen for the Louisiana Pepperplex Concessions and Restaurants Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. And David, would you please explain this one?
Okay, so out at the Pepperplex, contractors making some headway on the progress. Unfortunately, they hit an electrical line that what we call is an owner line. So electrical lines go from a meter to a utility service and then they go from the meter to whatever the complex is needing the electrical for. So whenever a contractor gets on site, they're required to mark utility lines. But they can only mark what the utility company will mark for them. And so this line that was severed during a trenching process in order, they were installing some water lines, that wasn't marked. And so basically, it's a wire four feet down that they didn't know it was there. No one, we, we don't have any drawings on it and it actually serves, it brings power to the office building. So there's currently no power at the office. So this is needed to repower the office, correct the, redo the wiring, not splicing it, which is, would cause issues in the future. Correct way of handling it, $7,000.
And David and I looked at a couple of ways to do it. Like I tell you, he's very handy. And so we looked at a few ways to run it and, and it, one of them came up $1,000 cheaper. And after we talked about it, it wasn't as good of a solution. So we came back to this, you know. We're building a new park out there. We can't do things that are going to come back in wholeness. And it was my idea that didn't work, but anyway, it was only $1,000 cheaper.
Contractors marked out as much of the lines as they could during the process as well as what some of the values, $600 was. So we told them, look, y'all, you marked it now, so now you can't ask for it again if you hit it.
Yeah, you hit it again, it's your behavior.
Then it's on you.
You've got to document it.
Yes, sir.
The question I have is, in an incident like this, does a contractor have insurance for it?
It does. They, no, no contractor is going, anything that is hidden conditions, anything that is unknown and unforeseen, you can't ask the contractor to go against his insurance because, one, his deductible is going to be huge. And then number two, it's not his fault. You know, architect can't dictate means and methods. But at the same time, if you hit something that's unforeseen and unknown, it's not the contractor's fault either. So you only use your insurance when you're at fault.
Okay.
And it was our, our line on our property.
Yes, and it's our line on our property and it's hidden. And y'all got to remember, you know, and look, I praise people for doing it. For 15 years, they kept the Pepperplex going with no money. So dads ran things. Contractors went out and volunteered to do work. We don't, you don't know what's there, you know? Yeah, wait, he, yeah, you had to hit it first. Sorry.
Yeah, so, yes, I was thinking to say, there's probably going to be another incident, I'm sure, moving forward if they don't, hopefully. But hopefully the line's marked now, right?
Right, and they actually finished the Southfields Coastal Soccer Group without any incident. So it's really the, the lines that are needed to go to the concession building.
My question is, the additional workdays added, is that because you have to rerun that conduit?
That is, yeah. That, and, and the time it took to kind of go through this process, you know, they're on a really tight crunch on, on this, you know, getting it done. We have to go through the council, you know, y'all meet every two weeks. So it's just, they're anticipating those kind of things. But they, they're probably still going to finish within a reasonable timeframe.
I was just curious, that was strictly isolated to that one incident.
It is.
You got to remember, they're under liquidated damages, so they owe so much a day if they, you know, run over. So contractor's going to play the game and look for every opportunity to say, I need X amount of days or I lost X amount of days because he doesn't want to put his own neck in the noose, you know, anyway.
I wanted to add one more thing. So what we normally get or try to get as a result of a project that is a long-term project is called Asbeld Drawings. Asbeld's drawings identify the locations of all lines underground, but there are no Asbeld's drawings on this project. We have a little bit of information on the sprinkler systems that were installed on the project. We shared that with the contractors to try to avoid a mistake in the future. But again, you know, we're not Superman. We can't see underground. And a lot of the lines don't have tracing cables. So if they were traceable, then possibly the cables could be traced. But there are just so many lines that are not. And as Freddie said, a lot of volunteers put them down and they just forgot to mark them. So that's, that's issue with Facebook.
They didn't get a permit either.
And Dad built drawings, you're like on paper bags and stuff.
Anybody, any other comments? None? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. 6D.
Resolution Number 22-221, Accepting Certificate of Substantial Completion for the New Iberia Historic District Trail Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Move.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swier. Do you have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Markcott, thank you all. Any discussion on this item? David, do you want to tell us about it?
Lainey's got some photos.
Oh, good.
So this is the, behind in George Rodriguez Park. City Slips was the bulkhead project. This historic district trail was the pathway project and lighting and the stairs that were assisting to get people up and down from the city slip. So this is backside of George Rodriguez Park. It's basically the completion of the site. This is the replacement of the boardwalk too. This is where the boardwalk shadowed. And so now we have the path redefined that goes from Shadows on the Tash, actually goes all the way to Maine. We, we add another little link of it too. So it goes all the way from there to Rod Reed Park. Really nice little addition. It's, it's all been hydroseated, so the grass will start to grow soon. And I know that the city's got some other little plans for a few other benches and maybe some landscaping trees and things like that to help dress it out even more. But it's all lit. We got some nice lights that help to illuminate the path, safe now. So be ready for the public to use.
Good. Questions, comments? All right, if there are none, then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all. 6C.
Resolution Number 22-222, Approving Change Order Number 2 between the City of New Iberia Menville Construction LLC and Paula Allen for the MLK Center and Park Improvements Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Marla Lewis and a second, I heard on this end, who was it?
Me.
Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter, thank you. Is there any discussion on this item?
Lainey, you have some photos of this one too?
Yeah, I was going to ask, do you have pictures?
So I just want to give you all the reason why we have a credit on this project. Jimmy Rink was hired as the artist, muralist. His value that came in for the, the task was less than what we had allocated for the allowance, provided a savings. He did a fantastic job. The mural is impressive. It is big. I mean, if you have not seen it, I highly recommend going to check out. It's bright and colorful. You can't miss it.
We'll be doing a ribbon cutting, a ribbon cutting scene.
Yeah, and so there are some extra dollars that go back into the city coffers. And I'm sure the mayor has some plans for that too.
Yes, I do. It's not much, but I do. Any questions, comments?
Beautiful.
It is, it is. Cool. Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. 6F.
Resolution Number 22-223, Awarding Six Month Bids.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. These are our normal six-month bids. Is there any questions or comments?
Just for the public to know, this is on supplies.
Yes, yes.
Concrete, all kinds of supplies that we use.
Yep. Pretty mundane.
Yeah.
We got to do it. We got to do it.
Exactly.
Any way we can save a little money. So, any discussion?
I did have one question about the 30-yard dumpster. So that's not going to be provided by?
No, we, in the contract, we have some that are provided in some areas and it's spelled out. In other words, the fire station, some of the parks, City Hall, but not everywhere, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Somebody else? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. 6G.
Resolution Number 22-224, Approving Contract for Professional Services with Architect Paul Allen for services associated with the Little Brooklyn Park Bus Stop Pavilion and Pocket Park Project, FPNC Number 50-ML1-1-22-04 and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swier and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on this item?
So I did have a question on the invoice, I guess it's an invoice, that we received from Paul Allen. Can you explain the facility plan and the control fee and how's that different from the professional fee?
Paul?
Yeah, I know, I'm.
He's getting it.
I know you're looking for it. I'm just picking it up.
I'm trying to get on the same page with both fees that are presented. So the facility plan and the control fee is a fee that is governed by Facility Plan and Control and it regulates the amount of monies to be spent. And actually, those two fees should be the same. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out why you're questioning that fee.
Well, I'm questioning it because it says the Architecture Engineering Services was 39,000. I forgot my glasses, so if I said the number wrong, I apologize. Okay, and then there's another fee for 15,300, so.
We can't get out of that. We have that on projects that Facility Plan actually charges us that fee.
So who gets that money?
The state, Facility Plan does.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure it out.
Right, yeah, that's.
It's a tax.
Okay.
I mean, if you want to look at it, I'm not being ugly. They give us money and then they charge us.
I'm just trying to understand what it is.
They got to review the drawings. They, they assess us a fee.
Every project that's Capri-Autley funded,
Yep.
they have a staff of architects for Facility Plan and Control. I think it's probably 20 or 30. But what they do is the state assesses a value for the involvement in the project. They've got to basically manage the project. And, and they also have a set of standards that they follow. And they, they charge on every project that's ever been done, whether it's done by an architect or an engineer, on each one of their projects.
Okay.
So that's their assessment to the project.
Okay.
And it's based on a percentage. Yes, theirs is.
Yeah.
I can't tell you exactly what that percentage is, and it does vary. It depends upon the complexity of the project.
Yeah, because we pay a lot more than that, but you get the money from the state, you just say thank you, you know, I mean, there's nothing you can do about it.
Okay, it's just that it was, it said professional fee as per FPNC and then it said 39 and then it said Facility Plan and Control fee and then a 15,000. So I'm like, okay, I'm confused.
Good question.
Okay.
Thank you for asking. Anybody else have any?
Thanks for the explanation. I appreciate that.
Questions or comments?
I have a, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I see some of our volunteers from Little Brooklyn sitting in the back and I want to thank them for their continuous efforts because Little Brooklyn is coming around. And I want to thank everybody that's involved. So I just wanted to point that out. So thank you.
Absolutely.
No, they work really hard and have been for a very long time, you know, quite a few years now.
This ought to be a great addition.
It is, it is. Now, we've got a lot of steps, you know? No, we do. I mean, it's a property that's going to get donated. They raised the money to tear the property down. We deal with that. We do a schematic, I mean, I'll just tell you like it is. We do a schematic design and, and get going on that by the facts that they gave us and the functions that the park needs to have. And now that we have a budget and we have a dollar amount, we got to design around what we have. And then we are going to do that. Then we're going to get with the group and they're going to look at it and review it. Then we can proceed like a, you know, normal project, finish our drawings, of course, work with Facility Plan. Sometimes they're quick. Sometimes it takes, you know, months for them to give us all the green lights. I won't even sign this contract until they tell me we can. So that's the next step. You approve it, then I have to send the contract to Facility Plan. Sometimes they send it back in a couple of weeks. Sometime, I mean, it's been a few months just for that. Then once we sign the contract, then again, because we have other people involved and a donation and, you know, other things, a demolition. So one step at a time. And then once we have contract drawings and we all are proceeding, then they have to approve all that. Sometime it's quick. Sometime on one of our projects, it took four months. You just don't know. And it's either going to be Mr. McLean or Mr. Lee. That's, that's the two people we get assigned to, wonderful architects, but they overload it. So it's a process, but this is, got to start somewhere and, you know, I'm excited. This is the beginning of the process.
And once?
Mr. Broussard?
No, yeah, Mr. Broussard.
It's good to have the volunteers getting this all going. We appreciate it. But let's not forget about it through the years. Want to keep the standard up, keep the park up. It takes a lot of neighborhoods, people to come out to Woodworks and clean a little bit as it goes. You see it, pick it up, you know, so we hope that through the years, it keeps the standard up like all the parks.
Well, it's going to, it's going to be our park.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, sir, I know.
So when something's wrong, you have to lecture to me because, you know, it's going to be our park.
We just want help too then. I'll just stop now. We appreciate all your help. They'll take it. I can tell you that every park in my neighborhood too, we get out there and go clean it and do different things voluntary wise.
Well, it'll be our second park that we've added and we have a third one on the way.
That's right.
So it's good stuff. It's good to see our parks growing and touching more neighborhoods and touching more people. I'm not saying we won't take volunteers, but it will, it will be our park.
Oh, yeah, but it takes volunteers too.
Yep. Anybody else?
I was actually going to ask, is this going to be one of our parks? So you answered my question.
Just like Ann Street, just like George Rodriguez, you know, it's fun to build them. It's fun to, people get involved. You know, we got a donation on George Rodriguez as well, but they become our parks and become in our system and, you know. We know as we do this that we, we taking something on that's going to last forever, but that's a good thing.
Yes, agreed.
Anybody else? Then please vote your machines. Thank you. Good one. All right, 6H.
Resolution Number 22-225, Approving Contract for Professional Services with Architect Paul Allen for services associated with the Seer Gate Sprinkler System Project, FPNC Number 50-ML1-1-22-05 and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman Dustin Swier. Is there any questions or comments on this item?
Let me give you a little background as well.
Roll.
Sir?
If you don't mind, please.
Yeah, no, not at all. So I think the need for this project developed out because of the issue of the capacity of the building. You're kind of under the requirements of Life Safety Code and State Fire Marshal to not exceed a certain number of occupants. And it's a very popular building, I mean, for events. It seems to work really well and is well-used. So what you have to do basically is, in order to have an unlimited occupancy level, you have to sprinkle the building. So Freddie and I met with the sprinkling subcontractor out there to kind of get a sense of what needs to be sprinkled along with Heather. She was there as well and Lloyd. So we visited the building. We kind of saw some of the elements in the building that some of the sprinklers will need to be exposed, some of them can be concealed. Some of them need to be protected because a sprinkler system piping needs to be having a certain temperature within the room so it doesn't drop or freeze. Certain parts of the rooms need to, we need to add some heaters, especially in the back maintenance area. Some of the structures in the building has some old ductwork that needs to be removed. So it's abandoned ductwork. It just needs to get out of the way so the sprinkler system works correctly. So we also analyze a supply line that goes to the sprinkler system because basically there's a four-inch line that goes to the pool right now and that line is not adequate in size to handle the new sprinkler system. So as part of the proposal. So, as part of the proposal, we have a new line that's going to be brought in with a backflow preventer and detection devices. We're going to take it off of Park View. So, we'll have a new six-inch sprinkler line brought in just to service that building, which makes a lot of sense, because you're not going to have any issues of corrosion of a pipe. It's going to be a full-service line and certainly it has, has to meet the hydrostatic pressure, which means a line, when it's activated, has to push so much water out. The fire marshal requires that information, so it's all going to be included as well. So, that's going to give you a very safe building for use in the occupancy, unlimited. So, you can have as big event as you want, put as many people as you want. So, for now, it's a safety issue that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, and the other thing is, we function as a shelter. When we function as a shelter, because we don't have a sprinkler system, we have to send the fire department and they have to stay 24 hours a day, which costs a whole lot of overtime and a whole lot of manpower, because we don't have a sprinkler system. So, they're on a permanent fire watch the entire time that that building is a shelter, because it really is not supposed to be a shelter. It's supposed to be a gym. But until we have an alternative, we, we can't help it and we take people from all over the parish and we've even taken people from New Orleans. I mean, we're not going to turn people away. So, until we have a shelter, which I know the parish is working on a bigger scheme for that, you know, a bigger plan, this sprinkler system will also let us function much more safely and at a better cost that I'm not paying firemen overtime constantly around the clock to do that. So, it's, it's an important project. Any questions?
Yep. Does the, um, does the Western Community Center have a sprinkler system?
No, ma'am, it doesn't. It doesn't function as our shelter, so I pushed for this one first. There will come a time, it's also smaller, so we're closer to our occupancy load, but that's one that I would still like to do. I, I plan on going for that in the future. But this was the one, since it was the shelter for really the whole parish, I felt that it was a pressing need to get that done.
Okay.
And likely it'll also give you better insurance rates, because if the building is fully protected with a sprinkler system, your insurance rate should drop as well.
That's a good point.
Okay.
Anybody else? No? Alright, then I'd ask you. What's that?
No, he, I asked this question.
No, she asked the question.
Oh, okay, cool. Alright, so, then I'd ask you to vote your machines. Thank you very much. Alright, 7A.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 2022-23 and Ordinance Amending Article 2 of Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of New Iberia to add Section 1828 relating to waiver of land use regulations relative to permitting for mobile homes, recreational vehicles, or other temporary housing located directly adjacent to an applicant's damaged dwelling in the event of a declared major disaster or emergency.
Alright, do have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Timurkin-Gonsalat and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. And I expect a lot of discussion on this. This item came to us prior, if you remember, and we put it aside because there weren't any rules and we didn't know what we were getting into. Well, now we came back with it, because we could need this. We could need it. If, you know, we took a direct hit from an Andrew or Katrina and wiped out many, many of our, you know, homes, we need to provide for our people. At the same time, there were no rules. So, Jeff helped and we made rules. So, we looked at what the parish did, Laney did some research and of communities that opted out. Many communities just didn't respond, so they opted out. Probably 38% of the communities opted in, but they didn't know what they were opting in for. They just said, okay, with no rules. So, we, we didn't want to do that. What this gives us is the right to do it or the right not to do it. If we do it, it gives us the right to have input and rules. What we were worried about was they're going to come and put a trailer where you have setbacks, but they're going to put it on the property line and just say, oh, it couldn't fit in any ways else. They can't do that. They were going to come and hook up the electrical or the plumbing with no permit and no inspection and you don't know who was going to do it, okay? Can't happen. You know, you could have a house that's so wiped out, you can't even use the electrical, so then you'd have to set a temporary pole. Jimmy and I were talking about that prior to the meeting. So, Jeff tried to and did a good job of giving us that, yes, we can do it if we want to do it, we don't have to do it. But if we do it, we control the rules, because we make people live under these rules all the time. You can't make an exception, because, you know, what if it would just be one or two? We might say, we're not going to do it. But if a whole community gets wiped out, you don't want to not do something for your people. But at the same time, all the houses that aren't damaged, you don't want to create a situation that now they're, you know, they're struggling because the trailer's right up against their bedroom window or it's, there's no setback, or it's not hooked up correctly, or there's sewage backing up. I mean, we've heard horror stories of the way contractors come in and just haul these trailers to make the money as quick as they can from FEMA and just slap them in place, and then they never leave. You know, we've had many, many instances where you could ride by two years after a hurricane and there was still, you know, FEMA trailers everywhere. So, this gives us a way to say, yes, if we need it, we can put it in place, but we control the situation, which is what we do every day with our ordinances, you know. So, questions, comments? Councilwoman Brooke Morcay, you had your hand up first.
Okay, so they will need to get a permit from the city to be able to set up a trailer or mobile home.
First thing is, we decide if we want to do it or not.
Okay.
And then after that, they have to go through, you know. Yeah, yeah, first we've got to be a disaster.
Right.
You know, then we have to have significant damage or we're not going to do it and then it has to come to us to decide if we're going to do it.
I just want to make sure there's something set up, a quick way for people to get those permits.
Well, I don't know how quick it'll be, but it'd be one step at a time. We might have to have an emergency meeting to decide if we're going to do it, because maybe we're not going to do it.
Gotcha.
You know, so I don't think it's as simple as saying, huh, yeah, come get a permit. It's going to have to be, do we want to do it, assess the damage quickly? But you're right, we've got to move quick, somebody's out of a house. Assess the damage quickly, figure out if we're going to do it. Yes, Jeff?
Well, yeah, the mayor waives it, so it doesn't have to come to the council.
Okay, okay, well, you know, may I bring everything to the council?
Yeah, but I mean, that's as quick as you can have.
No, I mean, I love the input. That's why we, that's why we get along.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's as quick as you can make it.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
My thought process was the permitting thing, how long that would take to get, if it's so many people, to get a permit. You know, that usually takes a long time. So, just to be able to set up some kind of way for people to get it quickly.
Okay.
If needed.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Point taken. Uh, yes, sir?
Remember, in, in these situations, when you get become permits, it becomes a safety issue. So, you really just can't waive permits. You've got to really inspect all these situations case by case. So, there is some time associated with it.
Right.
So, especially during these situations.
Yes.
I do.
Councilman Dustin Swier, you had your hand up. I'm calling on you.
Okay, so, I agree with you. Past storms, we have seen where FEMA, FEMA came in, put trailers up. They've been sitting there for two, three years. I saw where people living in them started fixing up their homes. So, I was kind of on the, on the fence about this whole thing, but being that we can opt in at any time and discuss it and go through it, and like Ricky was saying, case by case, as far as permits, I'm okay with it. But how much time, how much time will the residents have? Are they going to be given a certain timeframe to go in and finish? That's what I want the public to know.
Yeah.
How much time are they given to have a temporary house?
The placement should not be allowed for a period of in excess of one year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now.
And it has to be removed at the end of that year unless, I hate it when it says me, but I mean, it's okay. I don't, well, I hate to act like, okay, I got all this, but it says unless the mayor extends the placement for good cause.
Right.
So, they can come and make a case and, you know, why they didn't fix their house or whatever.
Will we?
Well, I bring everything to y'all, so, anyway.
Will we have a process in place if there's going to be any fines or any other measures that if they don't, uh, follow the rules that are given to them? Is there going to be anything in place to hold them accountable?
That's a good question for Jeff.
Yeah, I mean, you could, I guess, I guess you could go to court and get an injunction saying move the, move the trailer, move the mobile home.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's enforceable.
Okay.
We're not going to hook it up and haul it off ourselves, but, you know, we have remedies.
Okay, but that's what I wanted to know, because I, I mean.
Yeah, and I talked to Jane before the meeting and she mentioned we should reference the zoning ordinance, because we're making a change by doing this, so she had asked if that was something we should probably throw in one line that references the, her zoning stuff. What is it? And if this supersedes it, fine, but we just want to talk about.
This will have to go in front of planning and zoning? If? No?
No.
I, I don't think we're changing the zoning ordinance.
Okay, okay, so it was just an emergency thing?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
Alright, we're done answering my question. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I mean, I like the way that we're kind of putting this together and it's time-bound and all that. However, if, if we have a Katrina kind of event in New Iberia, one year is not going to be sufficient, right? Because let's think about how long it took New Orleans to recover.
Yeah, it just depends. Some people will, case by case, some people are going to collect the money from their, I mean, God forbid we've been talking about this, but somebody's going to collect the money from their destroyed house and maybe decide, huh, I'm out of here. So, for that one, they don't, they don't need any time. Some people will get paid from their insurance company and they will be able to rebuild. If it's just a roof, if it's just, you know, if it's not too bad. You are right, there will be some and that's why we said it could be extended, that have so much damage or just, you know, they're fighting with their insurance or whatever, that it could take longer than a year. Jeff?
And if you have a Katrina thing, you're going to know it, you know, so.
Or will we?
Before that year runs out, you amend your ordinance.
Okay, I just want the public to know that we're not.
I'm not trying to panic anybody that, you know.
And it's not, I mean, if the one year isn't sufficient, then we will make the adjustments, extend the timeframe, because one year may not be enough.
It may not.
Right.
And we also have.
Just depends on the day. I mean, look at Lake Charles, same thing.
Yes, I understand. And we also have some examples of people that really seem to never get their act together and really seem to abuse us, and we do. And, you know, it's good to have this as a case-by-case basis, because, you know, you can think of a couple of characters who would probably milk this for as long as they could and, 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 you know, we have to be a city. We have to protect the neighborhoods and protect the quality of life for everybody, the person who needs it, but the neighbors who don't. It's the same reason we demo houses, the same reason we have all these ordinances that pertain to junk and those kind of things, because you're protecting everybody and trying to do this balancing act, but that's, that's the point of government. That's, it's the challenge, but that's why we're here.
And so, if I'm a renter?
Yeah, because if the landlord doesn't want to do anything with it, I, you know.
So, yeah, I mean, if I'm a renter though, can I come and put, um, an RV on the property and tell my landlord it fixes the house?
I don't know. What if your landlord says you can't? Yes, sir.
Well, that's between you and the landlord.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's not a government thing. Yeah, it's the landlord's property.
Okay, I, I'm just trying to.
I understand.
Cover all of our bases before we just go vote on this. I want to make sure we're talking about.
I appreciate that.
Because we got a lot of renters in New Iberia.
Yeah, 48% of our town. Look at the latest census, 48% of New Iberia are renters.
So, I just want to make sure they're covered.
But if the landlord says they can't put it, if he owns a property and says they can't put it, they can't put it. That, that might happen, but, and, but that's not a fault of government. That's a, you know, that's the, that's private property issue.
Right, well, hopefully it's not a big event, because then.
Well, let's hope we never have to. The best thing is, let's hope we never have to use this.
Well, because Seer Gates might become some people's permanent homes.
Well, that can't happen either, but.
Hey, 48% of people are renters.
It can't be forever. It can't be forever. And we've had that where we needed people to, you know, very nicely, when people from New Orleans came, we treated them so well, some of them didn't want to leave. And, and finally, we had to get to a point that they had to go. Because again, we've got to be a gym, you know.
No, agreed. It's just, this is a, I mean, a tough issue.
Oh, it is. It is. Any other discussion?
And some people might do like they did in New Orleans and find out there's green grass outside of Louisiana and stay in Utah, Salt Lake, stay in Utah.
Absolutely, but we're trying to hold on to our residents.
Yeah.
Some people left New Orleans and said, that's better.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah.
Renters, renters, owners, so.
Yeah.
This is hard.
We just don't know.
Predicting the worst part of the future.
Yep.
I mean, it's just that we're in a hurricane belt, so we kind of got a.
No, we have to do this. We, we had to bring this back and we have to have a plan.
Right.
Because we, you know, unfortunately hurricanes are inevitable.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, when you think about it though, 48% of our people, I mean, hopefully 47% of those landlords will say, go ahead and do this, but we're not guaranteed.
No, hopefully we don't have that much damage.
Right, but if we did, I mean, hopefully 47% of those landlords would say, go ahead and put whatever you need to stay there, but we just have to have a contingency plan for those people too.
As much as we can.
Because we're sitting, we don't lose our people.
I don't want to lose one person.
Okay.
Better to have something in place, something in place than catch us off-guard.
Yeah.
And it is piled on us, come in and do what they want, if we didn't have something in place. So, we, at least we have something right now we can back up on for a year or so to do what they have to do.
Yes, sir. Anybody else? We're good? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Good discussion. Now, we go to, I'd make.
Kevin Zaring to present monthly budget to actual reports for November 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2022.
Um, hold on a second. I'm going to propose, I've got a little problem there.
And we continue.
Instead of going through it line by line, I'll just ask y'all if y'all have any questions and I'll do my best to answer them for you tonight.
It's funny, because he's looking at me, but I do have questions.
Yeah, yeah, that's why he's looking at you. No, it's a good thing. It's a good thing. No, don't.
Okay, so when I look at.
Wait.
Oh, sorry. I thought I could start instead of ask a question.
Do you, you going to present anything?
I was going to propose.
He just said he wasn't.
Okay.
No, sir.
Okay, then, Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, go ahead.
He said he wasn't.
Okay, I thought he was going to say something. Sorry.
Alright, so I'm just looking at revenues and I don't have my glasses, Kevin, so I may yell out the wrong number. So, city court, looks like, why is their revenue so low, actual, versus what we thought they were going to get?
But we had done a calculation and originally we had put into the budget what we were estimating we would need to get from city court, factoring in amounts from pre-trial diversion, their portion of the tickets, to be able to recover the cost. And we were trying to use that as a measuring stick. As part of your adjustments that y'all just approved tonight, that's to reverse those numbers out.
Okay, because, yeah, their revenue is way lower than what we thought it was going to be. Yeah?
Because y'all, but just the opposite we approved tonight is prior to this report. It's not effective in this report.
No, sir, y'all had to approve it before I could post them.
Right, right.
Okay, alright, okay.
That's part of the difference.
Okay, cool.
You're right.
Alright. Okay, so I'm just, I was just checking, because some of these revenue numbers were lower than the 92% and I'm just trying to figure out why they didn't meet their numbers.
Yes, sir. I mean, yes, ma'am, and that's why we do the, um, the 5% adjustment.
Okay, it's just not reflected. Thank you, Ricky. I appreciate that.
Okay, let's just give you all a second to go down on this and see if you have any other questions. And it's the end of the year. This 5% is a requirement by our audit and.
Any other question?
Anybody? Any takers?
You don't see no significant problems moving down? I, I mean, I've been following pretty closely.
No, sir, and if you notice, it was quite a few entries. I was trying to be as thorough as possible. I'm not seeing a problem where we're going to fall short for the year. You know, we did a pretty good budget at the beginning. We put a lot of numbers in the budgets so that we have measuring sticks and then at the end of the year, we have to adjust accordingly.
So.
I didn't see a whole lot.
Sales tax fund? Is it, I mean, I can't really see the number anymore, but I have it highlighted, so I know I had a question.
Okay? You okay? We might have a medical emergency.
Leave that door open in case I got to go do the ham.
It's okay. I can't see the number, so, never mind.
What's 88?
Yeah, we had 88.
I can't see the other.
These are readers, like about a two. You need these?
Our sales tax fund is at, you can look at it at 89.
Better?
Yes, much better.
I'm looking at it and I, what happened was is, I apologize. The way we are accounting for the sales tax funds, this month's sales taxes are going to be reported next month.
So, they're low because of fund, the revenue's not in it.
So, I hadn't posted the actual sales taxes that we had received. They needed to be brought into the security.
Okay, that was my question, is did we have everything posted, because it was lower than what we had expected?
Yeah.
And we've been, and.
And we've been tracking every month and still going up, so at the end of the year, they're not going to be lower, you know. And we've been tracking every month and still going up, so at the end of the year, they're not gonna be lower, you know? And that's why, another reason we give you that sales tax report all during the.
Yeah.
Year, because we, one, we, we want to track that and see if we have a problem. Number two, it lets you know, if it keeps going up three percent, four percent, five percent, we can't come at the end and say it was down.
Right.
Uh, cause it won't be.
Right.
But it's a good way to kinda have a barometer, but once those last numbers end, you know.
It should be fine, okay.
It should be fine.
And those sales tax numbers will affect. The sales tax, the public safety tax, the one, um, firemen and the garbage.
Right.
And then just to let you know, garbage, there was a change, and um, we will no longer be receiving a rebate.
Correct.
So we will be clearing out that account at the end of the fiscal year.
Yes, they'll get their last rebate, that'll be closed, and then we have the new contract and, you know, we'll go from there, and that's a fixed cost, which, and came in lower, which is good.
Right, okay.
Which is good. Okay, anybody else? Thank you, Kevin.
Welcome.
Thank you, Kevin.
We uh, move on to council remarks, and uh, I'll start on Dustin's side tonight.
Thank you. Oh, I just have one comment, man, um, Gumbo, well, I do want to pray for Mr. Broussard over there. Gumbo Cookoff was awesome this year, the weather, the turnout. Um, I think they were saying, I think they had a, quite a bit more revenue just from the Saturday.
Yes, the Saturday was the biggest ever.
Was the biggest ever, that's awesome. Uh, Sunday was beautiful, enjoyed it with my sons, we had a great time both days. So I want to thank everyone for coming out and supporting that, that's a great community event. And uh, that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Um, okay, so first I'd like to thank the parish, uh, specifically Mr. Laura Brown for partnering with me to uh, tear down some houses in our community that really needed to be demolished. So they're gonna pay for half of them, and so I really appreciate them allocating that money to me. Um, also, I want to remind everybody that on November fourteenth, we have a little seminar at West End Community Center. Uh, if you are living in a family home and you did not open succession because it was too expensive and you haven't been able to really get any funding to fix your homes, we have an attorney that's gonna come out and talk to you about how do you open succession for as little as, as a hundred and five dollars, so you'd be able to get that property in your name. And um, and you know, and then qualify hopefully for some grants to make some repairs. And that's gonna be November fourteenth at twelve o'clock at the West End Community Center Meeting Room. Also, um, for all the public officials that were at the Eggs and Issues meeting, um, you probably remember me asking about transportation options for the people in New Iberia. Specifically buses to get people to work on the port and then also to get kids to school. One of the biggest issues you have to remember, if a kid rode the bus for twelve years, then they don't have transportation to get to SLCC. And so that transportation is a big issue for a lot of people in town. Even though, I know we have a lot of cars around here, there are a lot of people that walk or ride bicycles. City of Caron Crow just um, approved extending the bus line. I guess it's probably gonna be some of the Lafayette buses. Right now, they have one that goes to um, Amazon and then one other place, um, to some school. So those people can actually get to work to Amazon. But now, they realize that they had a greater need and they're gonna start a, a much more extensive uh, bus service in the city of Caron Crow. Well, we're larger than Caron Crow. And so I think we need to look at, how do we provide services like that to our citizens? And, and I'm not saying that it has to be all over, bus stops everywhere. I'm just saying, how do we make sure people can get to work and get to school? And so, I mean, if anybody, you know, well, one, if you are a person who could use those services, reach out. But if uh, anybody's willing to kinda help us figure out whether or not we could do that in New Iberia, please reach out to me.
Thank you.
And then the last thing, of course, I did have one last thing, is um, we actually have, I was talking to someone at the school board, and we have about thirty percent of our kids that really don't have internet service at home, and some of them whom, those little hotspots don't even work. And um, we just need to make sure that we are trying to make sure people know about the programs that are available, um, to get like internet or wifi in their homes for like ten dollars, especially if you're a person who have low income. These kids need that internet in the home, because those hotspots, they're, they're good for schoolwork, but they can't do anything else with it. And they can't access a lot of these services on the phone, so, you know, parents, please sign up for Cox. Uh, I know Cox has a service, reach out to AT&T, find out when they're gonna put fiber in your area so that your kids can have access to wifi, cause it makes a difference on their child's preparation for school. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
And I just um, wanna thank everybody who came out and supported the Saint Edward, Saint Jude Church Fair. Uh, of course, we hadn't had a, a church fair since COVID, so this was the first one. And it was an abbreviated version of the fair, but I think everybody had a great time. And hopefully on next year, you know, it will be back to where it used to be. So thank you, people in the community and beyond, for attending and supporting the church fair, Saint Edward.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So uh, talking about events that everybody's having, they have a big event, an annual event this year beneath the balconies on Main Street this Sunday. I think uh, we're closing Main for a short period of time. It's a great event, they are a selected group of artists, they even have some Motown, people from Motown come and sing. But Motown is gonna be a, a great event of all different ways of, of music and crafts and stuff, so try to attend that, choose well attended, weather looks great. Also, um, just on a issue that I've been get, recently on the garbage service, on these extra can issues, uh, did a little research, talked to the mayor and Brooke, and uh, found out that uh, if you have an additional can now Republic, those can, those fees that you paid are not for ownership, they're for lease. There, those cans are leased, so you have to return them back and you'll have to re-apply for additional can and pay the fee with Pelican moving forward. So some people thought that that can was their own, they owned that can, but that is incorrect. That can is leased, so you have to return it. So just be aware that uh, when your last service comes around, please put your, your supplies out for Republic at the street, so we can collect them and we'll move forward from there. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Broussard?
No, I can talk again.
Good.
Our bushes, trees, branches, in my neighborhood, has been a little bit behind. So if they can catch up a little bit, we appreciate it, folks, the neighbors and no, don't give up on us yet. It's been too good, the garbage is great, they're picking up with our trash in the bushes. Uh, we need a little catch-up, Mr. Mayor. And we lost a nice, nice lady, uh, our first lady Kathleen Blanco, Mama, Miss Lucille Babino. Hundred and three years old, is a very, very, that was an aunt of mine, and uh, we sure gonna miss her. And I always want to reflect that. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, ma'am, I just want to thank the people that came out to uh, help out with the cemetery cleanup, man, that was amazing. I know you were out there, ma'am, uh, Ricky, we want to thank you for that poison, that was well-needed. Um, Sons of Kings uh, organization was out there, uh, New Iberia Senior High was out there, members of my lodge, Olive Branch Lodge was out there, I mean, they had a great turnout. Uh, ma'am, you were there, I tried to count, I'd say it over fifty.
Oh, I, I think there were probably, you count all the kids and everything, there were probably eighty people there.
Okay.
Easy, cause I quit counting, but it was, it was really impressive.
Man, it was, it was awesome, man, uh, and, and Pelican, they helped out real, I mean, they really helped out, you know, uh, they brought a dumpster out there, left it out there for as long as was needed. I gotta go back and see if they gonna pick up the rest, or if they already picked up the rest of the trash. Cause uh, me and Councilwoman Johnson and a few other people went out there the month, that was that Monday.
Yep.
Afterwards, and man, we started working again, that's how we got the poison out of it. But uh, it was an amazing event, and I think the timing was right. Now, Rick, being as that grass is not gonna grow as much now, so we got a little breathing room with that, uh.
We can also do something in the spring to help you guys hold that grass down.
Yeah, appreciate it, man, and, and I, I don't have anything else, if I forgot anything, I'll get it next time.
Good, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, I'm gonna be having our annual Neighborhood Free Garage Event, November sixth. Um, and what that is, is people who normally donate to organizations in town, uh, they bring their stuff to my house. And then those who are less fortunate can come over to my house and just grab whatever they need on the sixth, between eight AM to noon. And you can get even Christmas gifts, like people donate all kinds of toys that their children don't touch anymore, uh, gently used, of course. Um, we accept toys, household items, all those things. So if any of y'all want to donate, just get with me, and um, I can pick stuff up from you, or if you want to drop it off. Um, if y'all know anyone in need that would like to come, definitely tell them, get with Brooke, and I'll give them my address and everything. Uh, anyone who wants to participate, volunteer, can call me. My number is three three seven five seven eight eight five zero eight. I'll take donations the week before the event. But it's been successful for quite a few years now, and um, it's helped a lot of people out, so we're gonna continue doing it as long as people want to participate. And that's it.
Gee, thank you.
You said November the sixth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Cool.
From eight AM till noon.
That's awesome, thank you, thanks for doing that.
Yep.
I don't really have too much, our next meeting is November first, and uh, with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Oh, you didn't want to talk about the, I thought you were gonna talk about the tax.
Oh, man, thank you, okay. Reconvene, no motion, uh, I would like one more time to pop on the tax, thank you. November the eighth, we're on the ballot, it is not a new tax burden. We are paying off a sewer millage and we are coming right back with exactly the same millage. So we're not asking our citizens for any new money. What that money will do is be dedicated only to roads for twenty years. We marry that with the twelve point five we're, we're spending on roads now through our bond. You saw tonight, we are trying to get a one point six million dollar grant. We have millions and millions of dollars of roads to attend to. Twenty percent of our roads are good, we're addressing about twenty percent, that leaves sixty percent. If we're ever gonna get out of the cycle of an administration and a council doing one bond and then not doing another, we'll never catch up, we will never get to fix enough roads. This twenty-year millage will bring in thirty-five million dollars, not new tax dollars. That money will all be dedicated to roads. So we're asking our citizens to please vote yes. Uh, the reason we didn't do or ask for a sales tax is that that would up our taxes. There was no way to do anything else to keep our taxes the same, except run it like a business person would run it.